For a special meeting of the Thursday, January 30th, 2025, 6:00 P. M., planning board. We will do roll call, please.
Rupert Craddy.
Present.
Thomas Callahan.
Here.
Dr. O'Neill.
Here.
Jerry Brunetto.
Here.
Mark Grady.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have five members present, you have one.
All right, I need a motion and a carry on moving our minutes. Number seven seventeen, they are prepared, but they have not been analyzed, so can I have a motion on that, please?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You have a unanimous grant of that. Okay, we are, this is a continuation of the public hearing for Clark Road subdivision, preliminary plan, major subdivision with street creation, Plan B, Lot 27. Do we have legal counsel?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, thank you. Karen, Jill, do I have to read in the letter I sent to them, or is that part of the record?
No, I would say no.
Thank you very much.
As long as it's made a part of the record, you don't have to read it.
Okay, so for the board, I think you all received a copy. I know you received a copy. I sent a letter to all parties involved yesterday in reference to this. So do we have to formally make it part of the record, or is it part of the record?
It's already been added, I sent it to the applicant and to the board.
Can you summarize it?
Yeah, I summarized the process going back to 2023, in that for a year, the applicant had asked for a continuance, and we granted that. I took it up until our last meeting, where we discussed with the applicant the fact that with all the myriad of changes, some minor, but a lot of detailed changes, that we would hope for a continuance, client to client. So I sent back to the client some outstanding things, including a a plan for operation and maintenance, a plan for pollution prevention, which we never received, and which needs to be reviewed by engineering and by D. P. W. And I asked them to reconsider their denial of a continuance. And by the way, that's why we're here now, because we are within the 90-day window. I pointed out that it would be to the proponents' benefit to continue, in my opinion. But respected that the proponent had the right to make the decision that he would like to make for their benefit. I was hoping for more time, and we did get a response from counsel that counsel and the applicant are willing to continue. That is correct.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, so I know from counsel, and Mike's not here, but staff and Karen, our counsel can assert to this, said that they were willing to go till February. We are already in February, this January is over. And we need D. P. W. and engineering to go over that aspect of this, before we can even get it back with comments from them. So there is no way that we can do this between now and our February meeting, it's just impossible. I'm thinking that April was logical, March would be a challenge. We also, Mike requested that we close the hearing. I'm not open to doing that, in that that would prevent any comment on that report from being entered into the record by D. P. W. or engineering, or the analysis by the staff. So that's why I was asking if you have Mike on the phone. So I'm more than willing to kind of put us on hold, for you to reach him, and get his response, because I'm sure you are not in a position just to make yes or no.
Yeah, I would say that-
So can I just stop here, can we just say, for both geographers and everyone in the room, could you please tell us-
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
Of course, yeah, my name is William Anthony Junior, I'm here on behalf of Clark Road, and tonight-
And your role, your role, please.
I'm an associate attorney at Kelly Sue's Department and Resnick, and I am here because Attorney Resnick had a conflict this evening and was unable to attend the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
So I know those are, so that's where we stand.
Right.
So how do you want to proceed?
Well, as discussed, we did agree to an extension to February. We do recognize that it would be beneficial for everybody involved to have an extension, and to have more time to review these materials. However, I think it is worth noting that throughout this process, we have been cooperative with the town. We've listened to your concerns, we've amended documents multiple times to get them to completion, and, you know, we are requesting that public comment is closed at the close of this meeting tonight. However, that does not preclude the town engineering or Department of Public Works from adding their own input into the plans and requesting revisions and changes we make. Now, if it is impossible to have those revisions and changes made by February, then I believe that's understandable, however, I would just need to get confirmation of that.
I appreciate that. And while I appreciate and respect your request to close, that's a hard no with me, okay? And the board. We, there's history where that has been done, and it has been a disaster. So at this point in time, it's to everybody's benefit, including the client, and especially the client, to be able to freely enter things into the record and be part of this meeting. So that I cannot do. I'm thinking timeline-wise, because we are not, believe it or not, we're not high in the pecking order. So telling D. P. W. or engineering here, we need this right back, they have their own agendas. So that's why, and I don't want us to come back and say, hey, we need another month. That's not fair to you, it's not fair to us. We want this done, buttoned up, and completed in detail. I'm thinking April. Staff, you know the process through this building better than I do. Is March doable?
Yes, March is doable. There's only seven business days between now and the February meeting for you. Seven business days isn't enough, I think I counted about 24 business days or thereabouts, which should be plenty of time for both department heads, as well as internally for us in this board to review any documents and make any changes to anything. That's not just the O. N. M. plan, that's also the conservation movement and the H. O. A., which are still not solidified.
Right, they aren't. Karen, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're willing to, we're willing to push it to March, and that's going to be a tough call on ours, but we'll commit to getting it done from March.
Okay.
Okay, and I know this puts you in an awkward situation.
I think that pushing it to March is, we're open to that. However, the need for closing public comment is that this is now, your four continuances now, this is going to be the fifth.
So I'm going to interrupt you. So we spent a year, month by month, for a year, granting your continuances. So I'm not open to this discussion.
I understand that, but closing public comment will not prevent D. P. W. or the engineering department from being able to make changes to these plans.
No, but it cuts off any input from anybody else to comment on those changes and inputs. It's a hard no.
So, Mr. Chairman, the concern that we have is that if we close public comment and document correspondence, whatever comes in, you will foreclose the opportunity for the public to win.
To recome, that's what I just, probably not as clear as I should, and I thank you, but it's a hard no. And as I stated in my letter, if that is not to the client's liking, and I respect it totally, we have, in my mind, and what I presented to Mr. Redneck and through him to his client, is we have two options. You know, we're in football parons, we're on, you know, the 10-yard line. We can take this home and justify the amount of time and money spent by both sides. Or, in my mind, as the chair, the only thing I can do, in my mind, responsible to the town, is to recommend that we invoke our findings and conditions based on our master plan, and find that the conservation and the H. O. A. are incomplete, and that we've had no time to analyze the new operation and maintenance agreement. And then the board will make the decision on that. So that's really the two options we have. We can continue to work together, and I have stated all along that your client and Mr. Resnick have been very cooperative. I believe we have been very cooperative. So the parties have worked well together. I have no doubt of the capabilities, and I stated in this letter, that between Mr. Resnick, Karen, and Jill, we can get this tightened up and done. I respect all of their professionalism and their skills, but I'm not going to leave the town open to an appeal based on mistakes made by this board. I've seen less complicated, far simpler projects get appealed, and I'm not going to put the town in that position. So I am willing to pause this and give you a break, and allow you time to consult with Mr. Resnick, because I'm sure this is not what you bought off tonight. But that is where I'm at. I'm willing to compromise to March, I think that's pushing it on our part, but we'll commit to our resources to do that. I will not close the hearing. And those are both hard stops, okay? Would you like to pause at this point?
Quick five minutes?
Okay, I need a motion, need a motion to pause, please?
Pause.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's take, what do you need, 10 minutes?
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All right, 10 minutes good?
Give that, but yeah.
All right, I'll give you 10, okay. All right, I don't know if it's worth us starting our-
It is.
It is? Okay, thank you.
We've got a hot game tonight.
So the reason for, and I'm explaining this as much to our huge audience that we rope in each night, the reason for this meeting was started last year, beginning of the year, in looking at the possible projects that this board could undertake as a group or sub, actually, subcommittees, that things that the town faces or could face, or special projects that we'd like to undertake. And each member of the board contributed. I don't know if anybody had additional things to contribute to this, but it's certainly not a fixed list, and-
Excuse me, Chair, do we need to get the other counsel in?
Yeah, I guess he can, counsel can-
Yeah, would you like, sure, Mr. Sutcliffe, absolutely, I'll get him.
So we have a new counsel here. So Karen's here, just for the subcommittee.
That's right, yeah, I thought you mentioned the guy who just went out.
We can file this, we can file this on court, Karen.
Oh, these persons ain't bothering.
Yes. Do we have a copy of this for counsel? So just to get you up to speed,
Sure.
A year ago, we, coming out of the, all those changes by the state, we had committed subcommittees to look at that, and really got a lot accomplished. And from that, we thought we'd apply that model to things that members of the board thought were, the town was facing, whether it be imminent, long-term, or short-term. And each member of the board submitted ideas or topics that they wanted to bring forward, and we would look at prioritizing them, and then seeing who is interested in taking what on. And it's a range of things. It's fluid, so people are more than welcome to add to it. We actually invited the council to come, and the public is obviously was invited to come, was open to come and add things to it. And again, this is not a one-time thing, we'll add to this as we go. So the thought was to go through this, group things that we thought were common. I think that would be the first run-through, and then start to prioritize things, unless anybody sees it differently. Comments? Tom?
Follow your lead.
Okay, Rupert? Okay, Tom?
Good.
Okay, anybody want to take a lead on this? Powers.
I, so I will, so.
And I would read these, but this is a list.
Yeah. So you want to just jump around?
Well, I, yeah, I mean-
Go through in the, maybe that would be-
What's that?
Jerry's suggesting, I think you're suggesting we go through in the order instead.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best bet to go.
Okay.
So like, any comments on storm drainage or they-
All right, yeah, so we'll, let's just, we'll run through the list and put it in front of us. So one of the things that we looked at was storm drainage, innovation controls, and storm runoff sidewalks. And we recognized that as a planning board, this isn't something that we can just mandate or anything, but we thought it's essential. I mean, the north part of town was cut off twice last winter from the south part of town. And we thought, anything we could do to get the ball rolling, and maybe get information, ideas forwarded to engineering and D. P. W., and then through them to the state. There are a lot of innovative things that cities and towns have already put in place that aren't barriers, they're actually integrated park areas or sidewalk areas that have used the newest technologies to grab and contain and redirect runoff from both ocean, river, and rain, so.
We should have had this in front of us when we talked about St. Mary's, is it St. Mary's? It's a big parking lot up there.
Yes.
St. Veronica's.
St. Veronica's.
Veronica's, to hold the water on that.
Yeah, and that's part of what this stemmed from, for me. This was one of the things I put on the list, but, so. Again, that's not something that we can implement. It would be more of a research and recommend type thing, of looking at what other people are doing, is it adaptable to what we have? Get maybe, working with D. P. W. and engineering, getting ideas from them, maybe even looking at state resources as to what they are working on, and identify some solutions. And then make recommendations to the council, or through whatever appropriate department it would be. That was really what I was looking at on this.
Would the recommendations be made by the planning board?
Yes.
Carry forward?
Yeah, would be recommendations of the planning board. Jill, would that go to directly to the council, or would that go through D. P. W. or engineering? How would something like that move forward?
What's the pathway?
Through the process?
You are, you are an appointed body by the council, so anything you might want to recommend should probably be vetted through them. But I just want to be clear, you're, for the first one, you'd be looking at investigating stormwater systems in other municipalities or other locations, and then recommending, you know, the town investigate those?
Yeah, bringing forward ideas and solutions that other communities are using that aren't just industrial-type, you know, stick a pipe in the ground. I mean, you look at some of these things, and they're expansions of sidewalks, they're parkways, where people, when it's dry, can use it as a parkway, or a walking area, or biking area, or something like that. But in times of storms, they're adapted reeds, they're built for the storm, but they're built to look like part of the scape.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's very popular with planning.
Yep, yep, so.
That's absolutely-
The idea was to introduce ideas of that, but-
Yeah, I mean, so this group could brainstorm, you can create a subcommittee, you can, you know, you can put it on your agenda, or it might be, might be more productive for your public meetings to create a subcommittee.
Yeah, so I think what we're looking to do is committees, subcommittees on these. Okay, so that was one of them. Any comments?
Yeah, why don't we get a comment on each one of them? You have a comment on it? Don't you?
I don't.
All right.
I do have, I do have a comment. I do have a comment on this specifically, just in terms of approach, Mark.
Yeah.
From my vantage point, it might be helpful. There's a couple of things on here that don't need to be here anymore for today. So you want to just kind of knock those off?
Sure.
Get those out of the way.
Actually, that's a great idea. You want to come?
And then there might be a way to group these, something you said earlier, it might be best to go through, say, just arbitrarily pick the number of groups that you want, four, five. Utilities, land, you know, pick two others. Drop them into the buckets, and then decide kind of how to, you know, who's going to be interested in doing what, and then go forward from there. That's my comment.
No, I think it's an excellent one.
Rather than trying to go through each one of these individuals.
Or which one goes?
So the one on the back, reviewing inclusion, inclusion or zoning, the fourth from the bottom is done, right?
Right.
And then on the front, property use for the old library, is there, Jill, is an RFP on right now?
One more time, Mr. Callahan.
The property use for the old library.
There is.
Is an RFP on that right now that the town solicitor?
Yes.
Is it out yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I've read, Tom.
Check that one off your list.
The town planner.
Did you write?
Well, that's not to say we don't have, you know, we might not have a point of view on that, or we shouldn't be looking at it with this background. I would suggest that we let that, let it run its course and see how it goes. So there's a couple of things off the top of my head.
My other question is, the town council has resurrected the economic development. Do we continue? That's on the list, do we continue with this?
That's a good point.
I mean, one of the things that I was looking, I was thinking when I saw this was, one of the things we could look at is identifying parcels that, you know, with the evolution of the town over the last 20 years, are there areas that we could look to rezone that would be appropriate for business, commercial, or even industrial? The other part of this, for the, well, that was the other part of this, with the possibility of the state passing down that residential development can be on any, in any zone. In arrogance, it, the highest and best use for any piece of property is the largest house you can put on there with the most bedrooms. And we could see business and industrial land disappear. And the last thing you want is to have a one-level tax base. So do we look at mechanisms that we, that the town can put in place where we could identify industrial, commercial, and then identify them as mixed-use zones, so that we, possibility of allowing the residential, but still keeping our commercial-industrial base? So that would be the only thing that I would look at in there, but it's up to you guys.
We do want to lead that, or should we just reserve a comment?
Well, I think it's different than economic development. I think they're looking at, going to look at what businesses and how to attract business. I think we're more on the land use side of identifying where we can expand, if we can, where can we expand industrial, commercial, and retail. But that's up to the zone, that's my, that's up to the board, that's my, that was my idea, my thought when I saw this. Or do we just abandon this and allow that committee to do what they will? I don't know.
I'd leave it on, Mark, I'm not sure just yet why, I just, I'm not sure, seems to me, for a planning board, not to be thinking about that is a problem.
I agree.
You know what I'm saying? But I'm not sure just yet, kind of, where we're going to get. Mark?
So Tom, did you? Yep. Okay, would you like to recommine?
Yes. I just don't want to interrupt.
So can I have a motion to to go back to the public hearing on Clark Road subdivision, preliminary plan, major subdivision with street creation, Plan V, Lot 27?
So move.
Seconded?
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, we have four in favor, one abstained. One refused, thank you. How are we doing?
Good, so we are willing to accept the public media, the public comment remaining open, and continuing this matter until March.
Okay.
However, we would like a decision to be made at the March meeting.
That is our plan.
So that way we can move forward.
Yeah, that was our plan.
Okay, great.
I mean, we're not here to try to, again, we've, we've been killing ourselves trying to get this thing done, so.
Yeah, you know, that was our plan tonight, right? We didn't, we didn't change the plan, you did. You presented material which compromised this time situation, and that's why we're talking about going to March, so you just, I'm Irish, be careful.
And he doesn't have much time left, so he doesn't care about going to prison for the rest of it.
That's true.
Jerry?
I want to put, thank you.
All right, so staff, you amenable to continuing until March?
Yes.
Karen, you good with the way we've handled this?
Yes, I am.
Do we want to take any additional comments, or give them any information, or do you want to handle that going forward?
I don't think anything is ripe for conversation at this point.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I would move, based on the request of the applicant, and we thank the applicant, we'd move to continue this until our regularly scheduled March meeting.
March.
March 18.
March 18.
March 18.
Do I have a second? Do I have a motion? Yes, Karen?
You might want to add something to the motion, to the effect that you're aware that that goes beyond the 90 days, and that the applicant has voluntarily agreed to it.
Thank you, I always like when there's an adult in the room.
Right.
All right, so we recognize that by the applicant willing to propose, we've gone beyond the 90 days, we appreciate that the applicant has come forward to grant that, and the applicant is doing that in their own free will? Yes?
Yep.
Okay, now do we have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have to second it?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have four?
Four zero.
Okay, all right, thank you much.
Very well, have a good evening.
Ladies, good street is great.
And if they hurry, I'll turn it.
Doesn't matter to me.
All right. Okay, so, yeah.
I just want to compliment you.
Thank you.
Publicly compliment you.
Thank you. It's been an interesting week, we're just going to go.
Yeah, yeah, well done.
Can you do me a favor and extend my thanks to Mr. Resnick?
Of course.
Thank you. All right, so Tom, did you do a pass-through on?
No, but I think we can do it pretty quick.
All right, you want to lead that?
I'll try, and then people should jump in as the big plus to go through. So let's just say, going through storm drains, economic development, planning for changing population, I would have a bucket called people or population, and that'll go in that bucket. We talked about property use for the old library, that's all. Teen Center's a facility, just kind of put that, create something for facilities. Impacts of changing density for more intense development under state and air, it's carrying capacity, right? In my judgment, this is primarily some combination of utilities and roadways and traffic. People only see that different.
Yeah, so I would throw, so I would throw in that bucket. So existing demand by neighborhood, building size by room, which is utilities, and expansion exists in structures on demand.
What would you call the bucket?
I'm just, I'm throwing all that in the bucket right now. We can throw things out of the bucket, done.
And then it's down below, impact expansion of existing facilities. I think that's, I think that's two for a purpose as well. I'd see all those together.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a bucket for land, and I-
Good night. Good night, thank you very much.
And I think the, so for example, the inventory of substantial lots is kind of a land, land-related issue, just dropping it out there. I say, I'm not sure what track all administrative developments mean.
So the idea, I think that came from me, and the idea was with the changes in the planning laws, an awful lot of decisions are being made administratively, and without transparency, so I thought it would be good to sort of capture those, so that people know what's happening.
Do building officials do their own annual report for, does that information get captured anywhere?
I don't believe they do. I don't believe they do, Mr. Callahan. I've never seen it. I've never heard it. But you, you're looking, I want to make sure.
We're down the, where it says?
Track all administrative developments approved. Are you referring, Mr. Friday, are you referring to unmergers?
Yeah, there's like a whole host of things. Modifications. There's a whole host of things that are now administrative that just need transparency.
I, I think they keep track of them, but I don't know if they put them in an annual report. I don't believe they do. But I know they keep track of them and things like unmergers, lot unmergers. We actually get a copy of it because we all keep it when we, you know, for us to update our GIS. And modifications, they do record. Because modification is just another way of variance, another form of variance.
It just seems to, you know, if we track that for a year, like, it seems like the council should have that information. It would be good for us to have that information when working on the plan update.
Yeah.
Is this, when I saw this, I thought this was based out of the new state.
All the changes, yeah.
Where, yeah, where a lot of development will now go administrative rather than come here.
Yeah.
And we wanted to make sure that all of that was of the public, even though it's done, it's done legally, it's done the way the state wants it done. But it could leave a lot of people with questions if they don't know what's going on.
And there's, and there's some other towns I know that are putting those on their planning agenda as just as a documentation.
That might be.
So the public knows it's happening.
Who does that?
I think South Kingston.
Do I?
Somebody did it. Somebody was doing it.
I know with modifications, they have to be advertised, just like a full variance public hearing. And if anybody, anybody in town objects to a modification that's advertised, whether you're a direct of butter or not, it gets bumped up to a full public hearing and they have to come before you end zoning board.
Yeah. Has it happened here?
Oh, it has. We've had a couple of applications that have come through because, actually, I take that back. The two that I'm thinking of, they worked it out. They addressed a butter spreader.
All right.
I get that.
And it, well, we can talk about that later, but I mean, yeah.
But I think we're all on the same page and I think it's something that really needs to be done. And looking at the style of this new council, I think they would like that information.
Transparency.
Yeah.
So I'll check, I'll check with the building official's office about the annual report, but probably more importantly, how they track that in their spreadsheets. I know they, I know they have a way, but we don't, we don't access that unless asked, which you've just asked. So I'll try to get the numbers for 2024 for unmergers, which I think we've had three. I stamped maybe two.
Two.
Two unmergers. And I'll get a tally of what we did for, or what the town did for modifications in 2024.
All right. Tom, you want to continue?
Yes, let me just shut this off. Thank you. So trailers, tiny houses, ancillary dwelling uses, all to me fit in a bucket. That sounds like housing, something like that.
Okay.
I like that term tiny houses.
And then moving on, the parking stuff goes into the parking utilities, that kind of.
Well, I think that that parking one was an example. I think the board talked about reviewing past recommendations to the council for modifications and improvements and doing this on a regular basis and then analyzing those and sending back up to the council with updates. And as things evolve, as change, when we look at things and figure out what worked and what didn't work, I think that's really what this was, the body of this was.
Were you, or the last time, the parking?
Yeah, I was.
You remember my comments?
Yes, and mine too.
That was 10 years, 11 years before. We did the same thing. You know, it changed.
So the difficulty is, for example, is the assumption that I've been given, the assumption that some of the councils had was that our recommendation to do the town council was three hour parking. That was it. That was not. We had a lengthy analysis. We had a lot of recommendations. So I think especially when you transition from one council to another. I mean, the same thing was with the student housing. It was not just three. It was not even. It was a process of student housing and creating a backbone for that. Same thing with short-term. So, you know, we just recommend, councils are free to take what they want out of the recommendations. So the feeling was that we go back and review those, look at the implementation, and then make recommendations back to the town council. Now, they do what they wish with them, but that's really what this was all about.
And the modification one, when, that was done in a pretty quick timeframe because of the state deadline. And when we recommended it, Terry's perspective was we should look at this a year later, just like we did with FAR.
Right.
See how it's working and see if things need to be tweaked. So that's what the piece of that is.
And I think this council would appreciate that. They seem to, they don't want to just accept what's coming at them. They want to know why.
Yep.
So.
Didn't we talk about, shouldn't the terminology be unrelated or the ordinance? Why do we keep picking on the students?
I don't know. That is something that.
Isn't that terminology sort of discriminatory?
Yeah, I think it's gone out the window too.
Shouldn't we say unrelated ordinance?
I don't think, no, I think.
Council.
Unrelated better.
Yes, thank you.
Unrelated is undefinable.
I don't know.
There is no definition for unrelated.
Excuse me, in legal parlance, it's specifically vague.
Didn't we have this conversation?
It depends who you ask at this point, but I agree.
About a month or six weeks ago with Steve in terms of whether or not to leave the student ordinance.
Yeah, we did.
And the consensus here was, on Steve's recommendation, was to leave the student ordinance in place. Because at least it may be at some point in time enforceable where the unrelated is not.
Right. I remember that.
So I want to be clear on what the, what the conversation was. That was it. But, but this was under the, the change that you made was under the guise of the 2024 legislative updates, which changed the definition of household. And we, you had originally, this board had originally recommended changing the definition of student occupied dwellings to match the definition of household. And came back later and said, because of the litigation, we're going to not make that change.
Right.
We couldn't go back and eliminate student, the student occupied dwelling definition because that wasn't part of the changes that you were making. You were trying to, as we always have for the record, we comply with the state law and the mandates. All of our ordinances, including this one, comply with the state law and the mandates. That's what, that's what we did. So you sort of erased your change on that. So that definition still stands as it was.
Correct.
Yeah, same thing, but I just want to be clear that it was.
Your way of, your way of explaining what we did is more accurate than my, my more simple explanation.
I find that, I find that every time I walk over.
It's not a sunshine coming my way tonight.
And it's helpful for the, and it's helpful for the record and I appreciate it.
Council, if we think of students being fairly bright and they know what the law is and they know unrelated is, is the way to go, when they get knocked on the door, you know, they're not a student. I'm not really.
It's a great question.
What, so it's enforceable, that's a good point too, isn't it?
You know, it's always, personally, I've always thought that there's enforceability problems with that ordinance.
Yeah.
Creative ways of going around that and finding out who is related through legal processes. But you're spot on. I mean, I've thought of that myself. And even from the time it's getting more and more years in the rearview mirror when I was a student myself. But you're absolutely right. How do you know who is in that house? How do you know the relationship of those folks? You're spot on.
Well, that was part of our actual recommendations. One of them was, and we stated actually that none of it can really work unless you had a backbone to it. And we had recommendation was a registration process where whoever is on the lease would register, either they would have to or the landlord would do it. But name, registration of their vehicle, contact information and all of that. So when they came to the house, it's like, okay, these are the four people that are supposed to be here. Everybody else go home. That was not adopted, but that was one of the key things that we looked at in that whole situation, that none of it works unless you have something that can have, I hate to use the word enforcement, but information to enable anybody responding to something, including a medical emergency, to know what's happening there.
I've heard it from the enforcement officials themselves, to Dr. O'Neill's point. I knock on the door, I don't know who is answering that door. I don't know the relationship between the person who is answering the door and the kid sitting on the couch. It's a guessing game. And it's, continue with the game analogy, it's whack-a-mole. How do I know who's who in the zoo here?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Are we going to have this out here or are we going to do that? So I think, I think, but I think these are the things that, this is, this is the reason, if I could, this is the reason why we put this in here, is to revisit these and to look at all of these. And anything that we put up would be, it's just a review process of various things that we've put together.
So to your point on this issue, this is a little different. Somebody, some group would be charged to look at these types of things that have happened over the course of what period of time. Set them up and say, we're going to take, we're going to take the time to see how they're actually working.
Yeah, so the idea would be to have subcommittees to work on these and then come back to them.
I understand, but, but this is a little different than, what I'll say, the physical things we've been talking about.
Yeah, or the imaginative things. This is, this is.
This is basically quality control.
It is. Thank you. Good way of putting it. This is going to be its own bucket.
I think it does have to be its own bucket.
Yeah.
I think it has to be its own bucket, yeah. Students, short-term, short-term.
I think that was.
Fine, unrelated.
Yeah.
They all belong in one bucket.
Parking, parking.
I don't know about parking. Parking's a little different. Parking's either utility or traffic and parking.
Right, but it was, it was a review of our recommendation.
I'm sorry, I'm moving down the list. You're still, you're still on the.
Well, no, because I think student ordinance and the short-term ordinance were examples of the review of past recommendations. When I typed it up, all my notes put those three things in as examples of things that could be reviewed.
Okay, so you're saying those should be indented.
Yeah, they should have been.
That's fine.
All right.
Now I get it. Galilee development should be bucketed with economic development for the purposes of this exercise?
Yep. I like that.
Let's spend a minute on the university for just one second. Jill, is that, do you, I know that the Affordable Housing Collaborative meets quarterly now with South Kingston and the reps from, senior administrators from the university. They were the folks that did the workshop.
The co-assembly.
Yeah, the workshop. Is there a informal, regular dialogue between town officials and the university on stuff? And that stuff could be as much as, we're the host community for the Bay campus. They're doing master planning for the Bay campus. Do we have a voice or a seat at the table while they do their master planning for the Bay campus right now? Two, how do we deal with a combination of 7,000 kids, 6,000 vehicles making a daily trip to the university during the school year? Where is, is there a place for that dialogue to take place on a regular basis?
So it ebbs and flows. The town has had, has been in communications with URI, depending upon which president is in place and which issue is at the forefront, whether it's the, you know, the extra 7,000 kids or the Bay campus or any other number of concerns. And it tends to happen depending upon which department or which, which section of town is affected, whether it's, you know, infrastructure or roads or what it might be. I would defer to the town manager on if he's in regular contact with the university. I will tell you that I'm a board member of the Affordable Housing Trust Collaborative and they just brought it up last night, that they do meet regularly. I believe they were talking about that last night and invited me to go to their next meeting, whenever that is, in the next quarter. So I'll likely be attending something like that, just to hear what's happening because they are keeping in touch with URI. But I couldn't answer at any given, like, I couldn't tell you the answer on the Bay campus or the infrastructure question or, you know, if there's the student occupied dwelling question.
There's just, there's, there's the little, and they're not so little. Like I said, you got the Bay campus, you got the, you got the sewer plant, Westmoreland Sewer Plant, right in the middle of Narragansett, owned by South Kingston, filled in large measure by the University of Rhode Island. Us having to go back and lease space back from the University of Rhode Island. And we've got 7,000 kids going to school here that are making a demand on the. So there is a strategic lens on this thing that I think needs, at least in my, in my judgment, having kind of lived here and having come out of UConn and seen how UConn was dealing with some of these issues in Nancefield, that brings a bit of focus and strategery to how do we deal with these issues going forward to the benefit of all parties involved as opposed to not having a focus on it at all.
Yeah, I was going through my notes as you were talking. And the idea behind this was, and I'm shaping some of this, would be, I think this group would make a recommendation to the plan, to the council to create a standing committee, a joint committee with the university. And the big thing was, in a non-political manner, not getting into the politics of everything, but looking at the actual nuts and bolts, day-to-day issues between, as you said, infrastructure, stress on services.
Traffic.
Growth patterns, traffic patterns. And have an ongoing dialogue on a group that is mandated just to communicate back and forth and work. Look, and they might be doing some strategic planning and things. But it was, the big thing, and it was, I don't know how many people I pitched in on this, but it was non-political, 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 because I've got a note times four. But more on a planning level. Now, what is the thing? A planning level of looking at, and I think it comes out of, instead of a fractionated relationship, to creating a cooperative relationship between the two parties. And that can be done with a standing committee made up of people from both sides, but getting away from the political part and going to the planning level of things.
I'll just say one more thing on this issue. This is going to be political, small P political, because it can't be otherwise. You're basically.
Right, but the idea was to get away from the noise.
No, 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 I get it. But it's going to be small P political because you're basically trying to influence people's policies and judgments and allocation of resources going forward. You know, I'll just give one example. URI right now has just hired within the last four months or so, Sasaki who's doing a master plan for the Bay campus, and then doing a master plan for the Bay campus. Somebody from the planning department, if they're not in it, should be right sitting in the middle of that discussion of what's going on at the Bay campus. University should be thinking about how to engage the town in that process. So alls I'm saying is everywhere you look, whether the state wants to do better on its climate-related goals in terms of transportation emissions that are coming out of 7,000 tailpipes moving back and forth to the university every day, how are we going to deal with essentially the utility constraints that, or at least perceived constraints at this point in time? I think we really need to dig in and see what they are. To, you know, what's the, what's the vision for the Bay campus? And if you're thinking about economic development, for example, what kind of research is going up there? What kind of research can be commercialized in the market? Could you do it on the campus over there? Those kinds of things are, I think, benefit both sides going forward. So I'll just leave it at that. I think it, it may or may not be covered in another bucket, but it probably, it may deserve a bucket of this.
I think it probably needs a bucket of its own. We skipped over developed standards and codes for apartments. That was on the list. Is that something that we've satisfied? Or do we still need to deal with that, Jill? I mean, some of this stuff is from a year ago.
I, I don't know what the author of that meant.
Yeah, does anybody know, remember?
Nope.
Okay.
I mean, there are building code requirements. There are already development standards.
Okay. So we can cross that up. Okay, so, we can cross that up. We've examined a number of houses required for a home with, I think this was inclusionary zoning, which we've already met with the town council on, and we need to formalize that.
So, you haven't met with the town council on inclusionary zoning yet. You just made your recommendation, which.
So, this goal is actually in progress right now?
Yes, that one is in progress.
Tom, you wanna continue?
I would put five unrelated with students, a short-term state, right?
I think that goes back to the top one. Yes?
Well, five unrelated is the law of the land right now.
Right, it is.
So, I, I think.
Does that just go away, or are we gonna do an impact analysis?
I don't know, just put a pin in front of it.
Yep.
Because it's an important issue. Road abandonment, I think it was, can you handle under roads and.
Yep.
Or it could be under utilities, probably bucketed in utilities.
Doc?
Yeah, Jill, remember we talked about road abandonment and the, the town charging some money because these properties have value?
Yes.
Did that go anywhere? Did you, conversation-wise, I remember it was discussed that this comes up every time we talk about road abandonment. There's so many square feet of property in Narragansett that are abandoned, or the town gives that away, so to speak, and there's a value. And most towns apparently charge for that.
They do.
I know we talked about it.
So, that might be something that'll tear.
Yes, it did. So, there are road abandonment policies in place now, but because it's, it would be considered a selling of the property, we can't do that without a vote of the people. If an applicant wants to sell their property, you know, if they, if they want to buy the property from the town, essentially the town's selling the property, it requires a vote of the people.
You gotta go in a referendum.
Maybe you have to go in as a referendum.
Correct.
And the town doesn't want to, why they're doing that.
Well, we haven't, haven't come up yet. I don't, I don't know.
I can arrange one.
It's come up. In my memory, it's come up regularly.
So, in many years?
No, but I mean.
But they haven't done it.
I, I don't wanna cut off Mr. Friday, but.
Yeah, so this is one I put on, and it's because we had two or three come before the.
We did.
Or why.
And they went to council.
And, and it seems to me that they're sort of ad hoc, where I think we had, should have a checklist of here's things to look at. Like I noticed, your buddy of property owners are notified, but not the other residents on the street. And so, there's some of these railways on my street that are used by the whole community as walk-throughs. So, I was thinking, and when I talked to Mike about it, he said, you know, they sort of had a checklist that had been used for different previous road abandonments, that probably would be pretty easy to put together a checklist of here's the things to look at when reviewing or abandoning.
I think that.
That's where I was coming from.
And something, something that's tangible helps the council in their decisions.
Sure.
On, and justifications as to what they're doing, why, also helps all the other departments of saying, hey, this is the value, this is why, and this is how we do it.
It's less ad hoc, it, you know, maybe, you know, maybe the, maybe the land trusts or parks think, oh, this is an important right-of-way for a trail, or, you know, so, just thinking about this systematically, I guess, is what I was thinking.
I think this is probably pretty easily answerable, in terms of just getting a list of the top twenty-five taxpayers in there. And so, we could probably take that and just cross that off. We could probably have that at the next meeting. Right, Jill? Just ask the assessor.
It's definitely not me, but yeah.
Yeah, just ask the, just ask the assessor.
Mm-hmm, you can ask the assessor.
Top twenty-five, right?
I think I'm on that list.
Excuse me?
I feel like it's on daddy's.
Recommendations for capital plan. Is there, there's an annual capital plan, Jill, that is approved by the, is it capital budget?
Yes, there is.
By the town, by the town council, right?
Mm-hmm, and each department, yeah, puts in their wish lists for capital improvement.
Okay, and is it vetted anywhere besides inside the administration?
It goes to the town council.
Besides the town councils? It rinsed, you know, has, I guess, it hasn't been rinsed here. Is somebody asking that it be rinsed there before it goes forward?
Again, I didn't put it on there. I will tell you that this year, in very much interest to you, I put in a request for capital improvement for the next two years, for, for us to put money toward our comprehensive plan update.
Right.
I don't know if this was tied in with, you know, like, looking at storm-prayed innovations and things like that, bike trails, both on the road and off-road. Those are some of the notes I had.
I guess I'm thinking long-term infrastructure needs, you know.
So, DPW would normally do that, or engineering? I know DPW, every year, they have capital improvement for their roads. They, they do their roads in phases, and if you follow them on social media, you'll find out which phase they're in and where they are, where the roads are going close. That would be, that would be the planning department. We have, last couple ones we bought, I think we might have put in printers. We did, Mike, for years and years and years, squirreled away money for our GIS program. We truly did, yeah. And ten years ago, the last big one that, that I saw anyway, about ten years ago, was your comprehensive plan. And.
So, what about something like, there is, I think, a ten-year wastewater plan being put together right now?
That would be through the engineering department.
But it's, but it's a ten-year look forward, or twenty-year look forward, I can't remember, of kind of what the wastewater infrastructure, both kind of the anticipated growth and what the consequences would be for what hits that through pump stations and treatment and the rest of it. Is that, is that right?
I'm not aware of it, Mr. Pennant, doesn't, at that level of detail, but you could very well be correct.
I'm aware of what the last one was.
Yeah.
And I'm aware of, and I'm aware that it's out there.
I know they were doing this, I know the engineering department was doing, they had received a grant to study sewer capacity, and I think it was in the pier area only. And I, that, I don't have any, I don't have any updates on that. I do check with the engineer.
Is that being done?
Yeah, they have a right to do it, yeah.
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 Well, that's excellent.
And I think that, I think that fit in with the whole idea of impacts of change, more dense population under state mandates, carrying capacity, demands of service in return. I think that all dovetailed together.
It does, but I guess the reason I'm bringing it up in this specific market is, that plan, a plan like that, the question is whether or not, as that plan gets developed, and after it's developed, how well should this plan board be understanding, considering what the assumptions are, and have a way to inform that plan as it goes forward. That's really, that's really the point.
That's valid. All right. Even if we just had a seat at the table.
Well, I'm not sure how, you know, organizations organize differently in terms of how to manage a process like that, and kind of where they look for input. I'm just saying, we, we need to raise our hand and say, that's something we have an interest in. And the protection of rights of way, or rights of access to coastal hiking access?
Yeah, this came out of, I'm on the Coastal Access Committee, and they asked if the planning board would start to take an interest in formalizing and looking at, and assisting their committee in developing some protections for these right-of-ways. Right now, they're working on, we are, creating a, a mapping system where sites would be identified, whether they are private, neighborhood, or public. They're actually going to, it's gonna be interactive, so you would click on it, and it would open up if it's, if it's public access. If, if it's private or neighborhood, it would just simply say private neighborhood. And then it would give you, I mean, they're looking at ADA compliance, what amenities there, is there parking, et cetera, so forth. And so, they're trying to work with a state group on this, to take it to the next level, because they're working on a similar thing. And in some parts of it, Narragansett's way ahead of a lot of people. A lot of people are watching this project. So, they asked me to bring it forward to the planning board, to get the planning board on board as far as, you know, as they get closer and closer to rolling this out, is to assist in protections of these right-of-ways and, you know, that may be applying for designations, et cetera, so forth, and so on. So, they asked me to put it, I brought it up, so, okay.
So, let me ask this. Mark, Jill, do you all have a?
Don't blame Jill. Jill, this is none of the Jill's fault.
I'm not blaming you, but she ends up, she gets, you know, stuff goes down here.
Yeah.
So, here's my question. If we start down this process with these things.
Yes.
How is it different? How is it, if it's not different, how does it inform whatever work has to get done on what will be some of the parallel track as you start the renewal of the comprehensive plan? Much of this stuff is, seems to be.
Strategic.
Strategic, and would be covered, I would imagine, in the comprehensive plan. So, I'm just trying to figure out, there's only so many people, there's only so many hours, there's only so many, so much, so much money. Is there, do you have a view on that, Jill or Mark, in terms of whether we'd be doubling up on stuff that we would be otherwise doing?
Are you talking about the list in general, or the last item on the list?
No, the list in general.
By creating subcommittees and looking at these items, having those committees dive into these items. My thought was that there may be stuff coming forward that we make part of the comprehensive plan. There may be stuff that we look at and say, hey, you know, we've gone as far as we can, here's a recommendation to the subcommittee, we formalize that, and move that on as a recommendation to council, or the town manager, or even maybe DPW, something like that. So, you know, it really would be as much a determination by the subcommittees as to how developed they can get this, and where they wanna go, the recommendations to the full board as to what direction we should go in. But I do see some of these very feasible, be integrated into the master plan, into the comprehensive plan. Sorry, Massachusetts flies into me every now and then.
I get it.
Jill, when do we start down that path of the comprehensive plan?
We're already down it.
We're starting, yeah.
When, um.
Well, we have a target.
Yes, so.
Last time I did this, it took two and a half years and thirty-two meetings, if I remember the number, four-hour meetings.
So, we've already.
Yeah, so, I will just set one second, if I can just respond to Tom.
Guys, guys.
If, but I wrote it down, Doc, I won't forget. So, just to give you a response, I would agree with what Mark said. On your list, some of these are long-term comprehensive plan type of action items, policy schools. We're having a better working relationship with the University of Rhode Island, having the, you know, designated from the planning board or planning staff to have a seat at the table. But then, some of these are very specific actionable items that you can do right now, like getting the list, reporting to the town council. Of all of the, of all the mandates, the changes that occurred in the last, you know, two sessions, looking at how, you know, how it's changed the, and benefited, you know, however, you, you know, however you see it, I would think it's a benefit. So many more projects were, didn't have to go through the planning and zoning process, because they were done through modification. We had this many lots unmerged and this many more houses where, you know, we're trying to get, we're trying to create housing down here. Doesn't help the affordable housing issue, but it does help housing. But then others, so I would agree with you on that. Dr. Neal, your last iteration of the comprehensive plan took almost exactly five years.
Yep.
It started in September, I started with the town in August of 2012. Comprehensive plan started in September of 2012, and it was approved in, I believe, September of 2017. So. Yeah, so it's, and it took, what was, I believe, thirty-two public meetings. You're right, it was thirty-two public meetings. And that's everything from, these meetings like this, you folks held workshops, we did community events, and town council, public hearings, workshops, all of it. We don't have the luxury of that anymore. One of the state mandates, one of the state changes, said that the comprehensive plan has to be updated in ten years, ten years from its expiration date, and you only have a two-year window from the expiration date in order to complete the plan. Otherwise, the plan cannot be used to make any land use decisions in your municipality. So, that puts you at 2029. We're already in 2025. So, this process will be a little more expedited than the last time. It will have to be, and otherwise, the comprehensive plan cannot use the document.
So, and to answer, we've already started this.
And correct me, Mr. Slidew, if I've got any of that backwards.
I think you got it, Jill.
But I don't believe I do.
Is there such a thing as a formal starting date to work out?
We need the money, Mr. Pennant, so hence the capital improvement. So, and we have actually started on it, yes, Mark, Mr. Preece is correct, in June.
So, I developed a, a chairperson's meeting, and it's an open meeting, anybody can come. We've met twice, and the group decided that, right now, probably the most effective thing that we could do besides starting to break down silos and communicate with each other, is to get a jump on the master plan. So, everybody walked away with, if you remember, the checklist that we went through as to what we have come. So, everybody's done that. We're getting together, hopefully, the goal was to get together before the end of February, and everybody have their checklist that would come in, in a similar format. They're not gonna all be the same, but at least give us a jump on that, so we can start looking at, okay, what have people accomplished? What have they still upstanding in items that they're looking to progress? That will really be the next phase formally, but as you guys saw, when we went through our checklist, we already started talking about, well, yeah, but we need to do this next. So, that, it, it, some of it is just organic to the process. But what will come out of the next thing is a, a date to start getting in those new goals and objectives. So, we have informally started, but the, the, the big work, the heavy lifting is going to, we're gonna need some.
We would have a consultant.
Yeah.
So, this is done through a mere, a series of special meetings, in addition to our monthly obligation, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thirty-two.
And, and, and we, we joined. Two special meetings a month?
We did two and a half years. Just spread around.
Yeah, so, yeah, Dr. Neal, we did, it was a five-year process. Five years.
Jerry. Doc and I are twenty-seven years old. This is what happens when you go through this process, man.
Seems to me like we should just put the, this is, we started on that plan, so.
Well, that's, I'm sort of implying that, that I think this is all part of it.
Yes, yeah.
But I think whatever road we have to walk, and what you're saying is, the wherewithal to accomplish it isn't available right now, so we can't sort of formalize where we're going to update the plan?
We, we, well, you can certainly talk about it, but I think you would want to have a consultant expert on board to do that. Like, we can, we can certainly look at the process and how you handled it last time, but you, it would, it would behoove, it would certainly behoove my department, and you as well, I think, to have a dedicated consultant on board who's going, who has the expertise with comprehensive plan updates to walk you through that process.
So, that's all these people do, so.
No, no, I believe we've worked with this.
And, and some of this, we may say, hey, let's integrate that into the comprehensive plan and go from there. And some of it may look at saying, hey, we can accomplish this now. And that would be really, my, my feeling is, that would be the recommendation from the subcommittee, who are really the ones dissecting it.
And if the CIP is approved, Dr. O'Neill, then we would put out for an RFP in the summer. To get, this summer, to get a consultant on board.
I think with your timing, Garrett, you're, you have.
We've got to.
It's, yeah, that's not too soon, yeah. It's a long journey.
So, for, did you say that the, you've got money, you're gonna get money in two budgets, over two years?
I, I divided up my CIP into two, in two years.
And, and this would be year one, if it gets through?
Fiscally, year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, and then the next year would be?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
And what do you think, ballpark, what's the range of something like this cost?
I will tell you that the last comprehensive plan, that was done ten years ago, was, I believe, just over a hundred thousand dollars. And that was ten years ago.
So, Mr. Chairman, I got, I don't know, looks like six buckets, maybe. Land, utilities, parking and traffic, university, quality. So, Mr. Chairman, I got, I don't know, looks like six buckets, maybe. Land, utilities, parking and traffic, university, quality control, recreation.
Mr. County. Neil, you can either provide us your notes later, or you can run through that again.
I don't know how much that would help you.
Yeah, mine are pretty, I got a lot of arrows.
I got land, buckets, I got utilities, and that would not include traffic and parking, that would be separate. The university, quality controlled.
Yes, so.
Okay. And recreation. That's what I've got. Others might have something else.
I had documentation on tracking the new development approval process where administrative approvals, so documentation on that.
Well, then we'll have another bucket. How about this process, all right?
Yeah.
Process.
Process, all right?
I'm sorry, process?
Just process. Process.
Done. And I know we talked about that. Does somebody have them already numbered out, or?
I'm happy to take a stab at it. We don't necessarily have to do that right now, unless you want to.
No, my thought process was that we would, people decide what they would like to take on.
In terms of buckets?
Yes. And remember, because we can't have a quorum, subcommittees are two people. So maybe discuss it with someone else that you might want on the subcommittee. That is okay to do, correct? And then we'll come back as a group, and if we have overlap, we can work, negotiate that with each other and figure out, okay, what are we going to take forward, who's going to do it, and what timeline do we want to give? Does that make sense to people?
So would it be worthwhile for each of us to say here tonight which ones we're interested in working on?
Sure, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes. You go first. I'll take the U's. The two U's, utilities and university.
Anybody? Okay.
Yeah, I'm interested in the utilities. And I'm also interested in the process stuff.
Jerry?
I'll take whatever's left over. I'm open.
Doc? You want to take it over? I mean, I don't think anybody has to make a decision right now.
No, it's just what's right.
I think it's just, you know, looking at what you want to do. I mean, one of the things that I wanted to look at is people and facilities. We have changing populations, we have facilities that are possibly underutilized, and I think that's what would benefit all, all aspects of the community and the town, so. People and facilities, I would be interested.
Mark, Mr. Chairman, what were your buckets again?
People and facilities.
Those, those were not on the list before.
You're inventing buckets, you have.
Excuse me, excuse me, they were Tom's buckets.
So what are we putting?
Just, just make the seventh bucket, if that's a seventh bucket.
People.
People and facilities.
People and facilities.
People and facilities.
Say a little bit more what you mean by facilities.
So, for example, if you're looking at, you know, needs, maybe, like a teen center.
Okay.
And then, and then looking at that and saying, okay, do we have underutilized buildings within our system that we could adaptively create a teen center within it? Same thing with senior centers. I mean, one of the things that, I've done this in two communities, where we've had situations where we actually looked at moving, and we did successfully move the senior center into underutilized, one was a middle school and one was an elementary school. And it was actually magical for both the students and the seniors, but the seniors were able to utilize facilities like kitchens and libraries and gymnasiums and things like that when they didn't conflict with the, with the school schedule. And it really opened up a whole new world for everybody, so. Those are the things that I was thinking about.
So you said people and facilities and process? Did you say process?
No, just peoples and facilities.
Jill?
Yes?
Is, in terms of getting people to the same baseline, so is it likely we'd be able to get time from public works and like the water department, the water department and the sort of people to kind of?
Do you mean time, like have a meeting with them?
Yes, yes, to get up to a baseline to understand, okay, let's be sure we understand the basic facts here and direction.
Your subcommittee, you mean?
Yes.
So that was, that was going to be, my question is, is, you know, what are the protocol and procedures for us if we need to meet with different departments? Go through you to those departments, I'm presuming?
Me?
Yeah, that's what I'm presuming.
Okay.
So we would go through you and then set it up that way.
Yeah, because I would be at your subcommittee unless, unless it wasn't, I would be at your subcommittee.
Okay.
So we did this before, who was it? Who, who, didn't we do this before? We sat with engineering, or it must have been different board, different board, different subcommittee, met with the engineering department on at least two occasions to talk about the particulars of our project. Yeah, they're minimal. They do like to meet during the day, though.
It's okay, I'm retired.
So I think you're all, you're all retired.
Although this is turning into a full-time job.
Yes, but they, they are. Engineering, Department of Public Works, Parks and Rec, any, any town department is happy to meet with, with you, I'm sure of it. It's helpful when you have, when you know what you want to talk about.
Yeah.
And they'll ask for that information ahead of time so they can be prepared, but.
Everybody, anybody want to add anything to this? Staff, want to add anything?
I just want to, I, I only have a few people assigned, so I would just want to make sure. I have nobody assigned to land, I have.
Well, this was a first pass.
First pass, okay, like I have a couple empties.
Well, it would help me if I knew.
What was in each bucket?
Correct.
Me, too. Do we know?
Let's do the bucket.
Tom, you want to go through the buckets?
Okay. Buckets. Storm range control, I'm going to put utilities. Economic development opportunities, and Galilee is not currently in a bucket.
Right.
So we'll just, here's another bucket right there.
Econ?
Econ is fine.
Well, wait, just for my own, my own mental octopus here, are we, are you going down the list and then sticking in a bucket? Or are you taking the bucket and going down the list?
I've been doing a couple of different things at the same time.
So we're saying is.
I'm creating a bucket where there is, a bucket doesn't exist for some things as they go through.
Oh, like the catch-all?
That's.
That's what we call the bucket and catch-all.
So we're looking at econ, 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 economics or economic development, looking at economic development opportunities and looking at Galilee.
Right, and if, and if I had to.
And I would like to be part of that.
So then, planning for changing population, I'm going to put with people and facilities. We don't need to do property use for the old library, we're going to put a teen center with people and facilities.
Yes.
Impacts of changing density and more intense development under the new state mandates.
Yeah, I think you put that under utilities.
Utilities, that's correct. That would also include, even though it's not utilities, inventory of substandard lots, that whole thing that's underneath.
Yeah.
Okay? Updating the, we didn't talk about this, update official zoning maps in respect to new state mandates. That seems to me to be a pretty factual thing to do.
Yeah, I had it as utilities. I don't know why.
Happy to do that.
So I, this one, I put a question mark next to it. I don't know what it means.
I think the idea was to make sure, with all the changes and everything that have gone down, is make sure that all our sources match each other?
So that's a state law, but it wouldn't necessarily be the, it could be the zoning map, but, but our zoning map is our zoning map. Let me back up. What, go ahead.
I, okay, go ahead.
What the, what the law says is that your, your zoning map and your future land use need to match. And if they don't match, one of the changes that just occurred in March of 2024 says that your future land use is the carrying document. So we did this in 2017, for those of you who were here, and after the comprehensive plan, we had come up with a list of properties. Some of those properties, the zone was actually changed to match the future land use. Some of them, the council actually denied. So we have incongruent zoning and future land use. We do have that list, but I just, I just want to be clear that it's, the zoning map itself doesn't necessarily, isn't a mandate. The mandate is that they need to match.
Right, and I think that's what this came out of, is trying to match. We have a new council, so it would be worthwhile to go forward to this new council?
Right, and then see where your mismatches are. So actually, Ryan has already worked on the mismatch list we have. We're updating our zoning map because we have had some changes. Where, that's actually drafted in the building officials office right now for him to review. So once he's taken a look at it, we'll follow around the process. And the, the most, the last certified map was, is still on our website from 2005. But that being said, through your comprehensive plan project, you're going to, you're going to see those, you're going to, you're going to see those mismatches. And some of them are, I don't want to say incongruous, but we have, we have a couple of, we have a couple of RTEN-zoned lots that sit in the middle of a future land use of park or public, public open space, or not even public, protected open space. And there's lots that sort of sit in the middle of a swamp, so those are not probably the lots that we, we're worried about having a, having a situation like what we had recently with that commercial development with the Twin Willows.
Right.
But the Twin Willows is a very good example of the future land use not matching that a lot of zoning. So that would be one that needs to come back up again. How are we going to handle that?
So we know Ryan is part of that subcommittee.
So, actually, I haven't listened to that conversation, I think that's process, I think that's process issue.
Yeah, I think it would be, too.
It's not a utilities issue.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll not process.
I would agree.
Update the zoning maps in respect to state.
Yeah, so I would just.
And I'd say track all, all administrative developments approved is also process, as we've talked about.
Yeah.
Yep. Trailers, tiny houses, modular homes, I think is land and housing. Same with ancillary, ancillary dwelling uses.
You're fast, Tom.
You're not calling it land and housing.
I'm calling it land and housing.
So that's the bucket is land and housing. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Review of past recommendations to council for modifications and improvements. I think that's process. Student ordinance, short-term stay, FIBO-related.
Didn't we move them as an indent underneath review of past recommendations so that all is processed?
That's all process.
Thank you.
God bless you myself.
Some of them were.
Galilee.
Not much implementation, yes.
Galilee development.
Yeah, we put that in as economic development with economic development opportunities.
I put that in a catch-all.
Yeah, put it in catch-all.
Catch-all.
Galilee is catch-all?
Catch-all, yep. University, the stuff with the university is university. Road abandonment is process?
Sure.
Wait, we, no, examine lowering the number of houses requiring portable units?
Didn't we just do that?
Yeah, I thought that was crossed off.
That was what we did.
I think we crossed that off. I think we, I think we did that.
With the inclusionary, copying it from six to three.
But you have review inclusionary zoning.
I think we struck, we struck review inclusionary zoning because it's already been done.
When you move buckets, you hit road abandonment under utility bucket before.
That's true.
So.
But it, but the way it was described.
Yeah, it's more of a process.
It was a process.
Hey Rupert, if you need help on that, I'll, I'll do that, I'll work with you on that.
I think that's foggy here, I think that's pretty clear.
I think, yeah, I think it is.
Okay, I'm still stuck on that exam, I don't even understand that sentence. Examine lowering of the number of houses requiring affordable units?
Yeah, so the threshold, so we need that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, so, go ahead, go ahead.
You remember, we just did the inclusionary?
Yes.
And we reduced the, we hit the thread, instead of setting the threshold at six houses or more, we reduced it to three.
Good, okay, I'm going to cross that one off then.
That's what we agree, we agree. We've been made egregious.
Agreed.
All right.
All right?
Yes.
So we just finished road abandonment, which is going process, going in the direction of process. Protection of road, excuse me, rights-of-way, I think is, it can either go with people and facilities, or it can go into the miscellaneous bucket.
You have a Parks and Rec bucket.
Do we have a Parks and Rec?
Well, you have a recreation bucket. I shouldn't say Parks and Rec, I don't want to.
Put in the recreation bucket.
Put anything on the shelf, okay.
Put in the recreation bucket.
All right, and capital improvement, we're?
And it says capital improvement plan, infrastructure, so I will put that in utilities. And maybe change utilities to infrastructure, might be better, or utilities and infrastructure.
Yeah.
Now, my guess is there's a couple of things out there that have, a couple of categories out there that have one thing in, and it might be one that has two.
And there's one that has none.
Yeah, which one is that?
Quality control.
No.
Which was quality control?
We moved that to process.
We changed that to process.
Yeah.
What was quali, what was process?
Quality control.
Right, quality, oh, change to process.
Change to process.
Okay.
Okay, stormwater, I just, I missed your first two. Stormwater is utilities, right?
Stormwater is utilities.
Economic development opportunities?
Is combined with Galilee.
Catch-all?
And, yeah, for now, we'll put, for now, we'll put it as catch-all because we've got to figure out the.
Okay. And planning for a change in population?
People and facilities.
People, all right. Yep, okay, thank you. In the old library, we are taking off, right?
Yeah, that's already out to RFP.
That's an interesting, I mean, it's, it's out to RFP for a fairly broad.
Fairly?
Fairly broad, right? It's a fairly broad potential.
Yes.
Ask, in terms of what can we do with this space.
Yes.
Right?
A little bit foreground in Jeff's.
It's really kind of a strategic piece of property.
It is. If I'm wrong, then I think people get credit to it.
You, you've seen, you know, I think the folks from the Affordable Housing Collaborative would like to see something done there that is aligned with their interests. I think there's some discussion that the town might, it might be who the town to basically decamp from here and move down there. So it's a, it's a pretty broad potential use.
Which is, to me, I don't know, is what happened with the library in only two-year terms, giving such a broad choice. To me, it just, it's going to make it a perpetual process again. You know, this, this council says no library, yes, library, no library.
Well, and it's, and it's put out as an RFP instead of.
Instead of feasibility.
Thinking strategically, which would be.
It should have been a feasibility, yeah, it should have been a feasibility study.
Yeah.
Just some type of narrowing that would, I think, would, would help. And I don't think Affordable Housing, their approach would mix use.
Right, but they'd still like to see a piece of that.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, all of it. Yeah, but, you know, we don't have a say in it.
Well, maybe the, maybe the proper thing to do is that we can see what happens.
I, I agree.
And then see whether or not it makes sense to weigh in at that moment in time based on the kind of proposals that.
Right.
It's a fait accompli, it's already out there, so, yeah, that's our option.
But they can choose whether to select any of the proposals.
No, they could.
Yeah, of course.
Anything else? Anybody want to add anything else? Anybody have anything that they would like to undertake?
I'll do land and university.
My pen died.
Yep.
Thank you.
All righty, so I have Jerry on land and housing. I have Rupert and Tom on utilities. I have Jerry and Tom on URI. Is that right?
Yep.
I don't have anyone on recreation. I, I have Rupert on process and on people and facilities, I have Mark.
Well, you need like three each, not two each, right?
Well, you can only do two.
Use a, use a forum.
We don't need to do them all at once.
I mean, one of you can take on more than two, but you can't have more than two on the subcommittee.
But it seems like can't be more than two together at the same time.
Well, two. Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot, it's a lot of meetings.
That's what I'm thinking, we don't need to fill up one.
Yeah, and you can even prioritize within this if you want. Yeah, and you can even prioritize within this if you want, you know?
And that's, that's what we figured.
Those with big, with four or five items in your bucket.
Yeah, you can prioritize which one we're going to do. Yep. So, thank you. This was exciting that we're undertaking this, because I think it's kind of new for the town and for this committee, so. And I think we have the right people to do it, to be honest with you.
I'm always careful about people who refer to assignments as undertakings.
So I just want to make sure, we know we don't have everybody assigned and we know that we have some, some categories that don't have, okay, perfect, great.
It was just a preliminary.
Perfect.
All right, if there's no more business, staff has no more business? Don't go thinking of stuff.
I know, right? I wanted to update you on something. No.
Okay, all right. I will, I don't know if this is appropriate, you'll at, may not, but in discussions with Jill, what we are going to add to the agendas is people are liaisons to meetings. We tend to dive right into our meetings and we don't get reports back from the committees that we have liaisons to, so we're going to start including that, make sure we hear from all sides, again.
So we have two liaisons, correct, who are Mr. Brady and you, Mr. Fernando?
Yeah, trying to break down some of those silos. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Seconded?
Move to table.
Denied.
Denied. Do I have a second?
Second.
Non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimity, my notes. Thank you, Mark.